This program is part of American Graduate. Let's Make It Happen, a public media initiative made possible by the Corporation for Public Broadcasting.
Welcome to a special Carolina classrooms, a town hall meeting from Francis Marion University in Florence on equity in education. The past four months have been a challenging time for South Carolina with the mass shooting in Charleston and the historic flood. The state has been impacted not only physically but also emotionally. Our education system is also feeling the effects of this. And tonight we'll look at the issues and inequities in education which have been brought to the forefront with the recent Supreme Court ruling on the Abbeville Education Equity case.
In 1982, the state of South Carolina began shifting the cost of public school funding to local governments. This created a burden for poor rural school districts that lacked the tax base to raise sufficient funds.
Their choice was to cut services for children because they had no means of raising revenue. The superintendents lobbied with the legislature to try to get some relief. And after that failed and having no other recourse, they filed suit in November of 1993.
Twelve years later, in 2005, Circuit Court Judge Thomas Cooper ruled that the state was providing a minimally adequate education, except in the area of early childhood where he found in favor of the school districts. Both sides appealed, the state saying this ruling went too far and the district saying it did not go far enough. The case went to the South Carolina Supreme Court in 2008.
And then nothing happened for four years. The case set with the Supreme Court and there were some changes in the court. So in 2012, they decided to rehear the case. They issued an opinion in 2014, which basically said the state was not meeting its obligation to provide a minimum adequate education for all children. And they threw the case really back to the plaintiffs and the state and directed them to work together to come up with a solution to the problem.
So what does all this mean? State Superintendent of Education Molly Spearman is here with us. Thanks for being here, Molly. What does this ruling really mean?
Thanks, Betty. And thank you, ETB, for hosting this tonight. I'll just answer this personally. To me, it means that it's time for the adults and the leaders in South Carolina to find a solution to the problem and to try and make something happen. I don't think, for me, it needed to be done with or without the court ruling. And I feel very comfortable with the leadership and the activities that have been going on in the House and the Senate, particularly in the House because they've been able to meet more often with the committee, that we're gonna, we are going to come up with some recommendations that will be put in place. At least I'm committed to do that, with or without the court ruling. But I think it says to South Carolina, it's time.
So the committee you mentioned, is that the task force that you're serving on, Dr. Tiller?
Actually, I served as the spokesperson for the plaintiff districts in sharing a draft remedy for, that we're proposing for, to help make things better, I should say.
I'm actually serving on the task force. The Speaker of the House appointed a group that includes representatives from the plaintiff districts and then legislators, educators, and state superintendent serving. The Senate also has a five-member Senate panel, and I'm working as a resource to them, the staff at the Department of Education. The House group has met all during the summer. Actually, we started back in late spring, meeting. Now we're in subcommittees to really flesh out the recommendations that Helena brought to us on behalf of the plaintiff districts. The staff of the General Assembly has made some recommendations as well. And the Department of Education will have recommendations also. So we're bringing all that together to see what's doable. Some things that the plaintiff districts ask for, some we're doing. We may just need to enhance that, but to really come together with a cohesive plan.
So it's a robust group that's been meeting all summer?
It really has been. And we met, I think, four times across the state and took testimony. We were in the plaintiff districts and actually went up in Abbeville County and in, we were in Marlborough.
So lots been going on.
Yeah, we've been all over and heard wonderful testimony. It was all similar from the districts, from those rural districts. But it was a great, great gathering of information. So now it's time to sort through that and really decide what are we going to take to the General Assembly when they get back in January.
Okay. Speaking of the General Assembly, Senator Gerald Malloy is here with us, and he is a representative of District 29, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And Darlington is part of the district you represent?
That's correct.
You sit on the Senate Education Committee. How can the state really enforce this ruling?
Well, it's a great question as to how do they enforce it? Because what the court has done is tried to set some guidelines or some deadlines. We have a narrow decision, it's a 3-2 decision, came out in November of 2000, I guess 2014. They had some supplemental matters. They still have motions pending now. And what you will see is that the court has said, we would like to have something presented by a certain date. And obviously, there's a little bit of difference of opinion as to how you would enforce that. The court would not be able to go into the particulars as to how the legislative process should end up taking place, because that's the division of the three branches of government. But I think what the court was trying to do was to end up moving us along. We give the court direction all the time. We give them rules for them to follow, to interpret. So they've given us something that they would like for us to end up doing. Now, I think that they will work it out. I think that they will end up having an opportunity to get together to look at the deadlines, to see whether they are workable. For example, if we are returned to the General Assembly in January, the legislative process is very difficult. It's, a bill has to be filed, it has to go through the House and the Senate, and then you have to go through conference or whatever, has to be approved by the governor as far as veto or letting it go. And so sometimes it's pretty impossible to end up getting something passed in a very short period of time. So it's going to take the bodies working together to make sure that they can get a solution. And keep in mind that this is a difficult year. We have the flood.
All right.
That we have, we have $33 million that's needed with the Department of Social Services. We've got some highway issues that have not been addressed. But these are questions here with education that can be solved when you have people of goodwill together with the right expertise with it to end up solving this question that we've had for a period of time. The lawsuit has taken 21 years.
Twenty-one years, yes.
And 21 years is long enough. What we have is we have too many children that have been lost during this time period. And so I think now, I agree with Ms. Spearman, that it's time to end up moving this along.
So we all agree that it needs to be moved along. It's been long enough. But Superintendent Spearman, is the legislature entirely responsible for fixing these inequities?
Well, the legislature can do a lot, but there are things that local communities, I think, you know, the bottom line is the achievement of the students. We want to, we want to give opportunities for every child to set the conditions where they can be successful for what they're passionate about. And that's our role as educators. The truth is that the opportunities that are given in some of our rural areas are not enough. And some of that can be done by the legislature mandating, some of that is funding. It is certainly not all money, but some of the programs, yes, these rural areas don't have a way to raise tax revenue on their own, and they're going to have to have some assistance from the state. But with any school, I'm telling folks now, to take a child who's at risk, and so many of our rural children are, but to take them from being at risk and to bring them to the level of achievement that we need, it is not something that just educators can do. So I would say the answer is no, it's not just the legislators, it's the communities. It's all of us together. It's the faith community, it's churches getting involved, it's parents stepping up to the plate and helping and encouraging their students. So there are things that everybody has to do. But certainly in these rural areas, their dilemma is that they want to offer more and they just don't have the means to get there. So the legislature is going to have to look at that and supply some things. Now, I think there's some things that we as a state agency have to do. And we can give more technical assistance to these districts, which we haven't been doing. There's some districts who really don't need the services of the department so much. They need us to get out of their way. While there are others who we really need to be there holding their hand and helping them with technical assistance in technology and curriculum and early childhood development, whatever it might be. So it's not just the legislature, but certainly they play a very key role.
Yep. Let's bring our two local superintendents, district superintendents in on this discussion. Dr. Helena Tiller is from Marlborough County Schools. She's the superintendent there in Marlborough. And Dr. Eddie Ingram is with Darlington County Schools. Welcome. So thinking about this ruling, does it give you hope that changes can be made?
We're very hopeful. I am. And I can speak for several of my colleagues. This is a step in the right, the right direction, and at least the conversation is starting. And it's good for us to feel that we have attention on our needs, because our needs are different than those of the upstate or some of the other more affluent districts. The poverty issues are real that we face every day. And I feel that this just really gives us hope. I think that Dr. Ingram would agree that we're working very hard in the rural districts to help ourselves. But we still need additional assistance, assistance with transportation issues, facility needs. We have needs as far as literacy needs to help our communities to become more literate. There's just a plethora of needs. But I really feel that this is a step in the right direction. I'm excited about it. I'm excited about the fact that the conversation has started.
Right.
I would say, I would agree with Helena and everything that's been said so far by our panel. And I would like the audience to know that this is not South Carolina's problem alone. Other states have similar lawsuits, similar funding issues. And I would like to clarify, Darlington actually is not part of this particular lawsuit. So I would like to say that. But I would say that we do have a high poverty rate in Darlington County, 82%. And we have some of the same issues, but I think it's incumbent upon educators. We can't depend on the state by itself to fix the problems. They can pass laws and enact legislation and help us do that. And Molly's absolutely right. There are some districts that are better positioned to help themselves and don't need as much technical assistance. But there are areas that do. And certainly, what we have to do in Darlington is make sure that we're using our resources responsibly and that we're educating kids for their future. We do have some facility issues, just as lots of other places do. We're embarking on a digital transformation initiative that is going to require some adequate funding, but it's not just the fancy computers and devices in the rooms by themselves. We have to be really careful to make sure that we spend staff development dollars and train our teachers. Public education generally spends about one-half of 1% on professional development. Private industry spends much more than that. And again, I would like to say that we also have teacher shortage issues that have to be addressed, which Roy will talk about more later, I think. But we have some critical vacancies in schools right now, in some of our higher need schools. I never thought I'd see the day when we couldn't find an elementary teacher. We have, we're looking for two fifth grade teachers right now, a fourth grade teacher. And those are in sometimes hard-to-staff areas. And the truth is, the truth is, some schools are hard to staff because of the perceptions of poverty and the perceptions of difficulty. And sometimes we have not only teachers' school shopping for what they may perceive to be a better place to work, but we actually have principals who shop. We even have, believe it or not, we probably even have superintendents who shop. Wouldn't you say, Helena? From time to time. So we have to create environments, and that will be conducive to supporting teachers, supporting principals, and supporting the education effort in those local communities. And folks, I don't think money by itself creates that. We have to create that with resources, with human capital.
Thank you.
Well, I would say, you know, a few things that have happened over the last 21 years since we've had this lawsuit. We've had a lot of programs that are duplicate. We continue to have folks that will end up having a program that will start that will not continue. That's what happens over in the General Assembly. But we have to have ways now that we don't get crowded out over other issues. Sometimes the issue on the equity aspect is caught up in the voucher debate. There's been discussions, a lot of times about what is needed. But what we have now is that we have this long period of time talking about minimum adequate education, and that's where the discussion has been. The culture has to change so we can start having solutions. And so what we have to do is that we know that money is an issue, it's not the only issue. And so there's a lot of solutions. Superintendent Spearman has talked before about virtual teaching, to have teachers that can get into the rural district, because you need a motivated teacher, get a motivated student. You know, there's issues that we need to have with the schools. Maybe we can set up some low-interest funds so that these schools that need some adequacy in funding, do it over a period of time, something that can happen in the district.
So lots of ideas that need to be discussed, and that's what we're going to be doing.
Move toward progress.
Well, let's move on from the lawsuit and get to the heart of why this case was filed. We were able to sit down with former Secretary of Education Dick Riley to get his thoughts on why every child should have an equal education.
Here in this 21st century, youth growth, development is absolutely dependent upon having a quality education. If a young person is to have an opportunity in the world today, they must have a quality education. It used to just be academic learning and knowledge. But today, it goes much further than that. It's important to have certain skills, so-called 21st century skills, working in teams, technology, communication, problem-solving, critical thinking, all of those things that are so important to have a quality education for the young person to have every opportunity that they should have today. And it is very important that those young people with that education, everybody be included.
That was great to hear from Dick Riley. Roy Jones, Dr. Roy Jones is a professor at Clemson University, and he's director of the Call Me Mister program. So Roy, talk a little bit about how we get beyond minimally adequate.
Sure. Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity to be a voice in this very important conversation. There are, from a practitioner from where I sit, serving at Clemson University, a land grant institution with a public service mission, I'd like to say, I'd like to recognize Clemson of having a paw print in every county. So we have a kind of a higher responsibility to the state. You know, it was part of Clemson's DNA to serve the state of South Carolina. And we're one of the biggest producers of teachers in the state, generally speaking. And there's no one solution, but as was said several times before, it takes the entire state and every stakeholder and every constituent in the state to be part of the solution and to partner with each other to make it work, whatever it's going to work. I just happen to be focused on developing effective teachers and administrators, which I believe is critical and central to advancement of the children of our state and in our communities. I do believe, though, that the answers, as Dr. Tiller had referred, come from the communities. I believe the answers, there's no void of ideas. The answers really lie in the communities. It is our responsibility to be supportive of those ideas and to bring our resources, our expertise, knowledge, however you want to define it, to uplift and meet the demands of the communities. And I just think that our institution particularly has a responsibility in that regard. Call Me Mister, you know, is 15 years old. In fact, we just commemorated our 15 years of answering the call and 15 years of making the dream work was our theme. It was to address the shortage of African-American male teachers at the elementary school level that I saw in our state, which at 15 years ago was less than 1%. It's not much better today. But putting in numbers, you're talking about fewer than 200 African-American male teachers serving in our entire elementary school population, which were now over 700 schools. And we wanted to double that number. Well, we've graduated 150 Misters, if you will, since 2004, virtually adding 75% to the population that we found 15 years ago. And what's important to understand, too, because overall, the United States hasn't seen an increase in minority teachers, believe it or not. You know, it's not a shortage overall. It's actually been a significant increase in minority teachers. The problem has been in turnover. You know, they begin and don't finish. Well, in 15 years, since 2004 and 12, 13 years now, since Misters have graduated in 2004 and been serving for 12 years as practitioners, none of them have left the profession. Over 90% of them are still teaching, and a few are effective administrators as principals in the schools and they're on South Carolina. You're talking about South Carolina, South Carolinian native sons, because we believe that the answers are here in our state to resolve the problems and challenges of our state. So if you get a young man that, you know, comes from a community in the same impoverished, you know, communities that we've been talking about, who want to not only teach, to teach young people, teach children, but to uplift their communities and uplift their families, it's a whole different kind of challenge and a whole different kind of commitment. You're talking personal, you know, you're saving brothers and sisters and cousins and families and being a contributor to the society and community in which they live. That's, that for us has been a success model, that, you know, we one, believe in the population in our own state, we believe the answers are there, and the talent is there. We didn't happen to go halfway across the country to bring the talent here. We're raising that talent here, and they're giving back to the communities. Not only have we graduated 150 Misters that are fully certified in teaching in the state, we now have nearly 190 Misters that are currently enrolled, from freshman to masters, among 20 institutions in our state. So we understand how to collaborate. You know, we started off with four original institutions, including Clemson and four HBCUs, Benedict College, Claflin University, and Morris College. Some of them are here today. And we've grown from that four to 20 institutions in South Carolina, using the same model and producing the same level of effective teacher, whether it's Claflin, Clemson, or College of Charleston, or Benedict. So it's just, it's a answer. It's not the panacea, but we think we've, we've got a good idea. And it also came as the courts were trying to figure out the case. You know, so we weren't waiting on the court case to take action. And glad the decision has been made, but we're still on that journey, and it's not going to, not going to change.
It sounds like a great journey.
I would like to add that I agree with Dr. Jones wholeheartedly. And it's true, what I said is true. We have, we have two vacancies for fifth grade right now and a fourth grade. And I'm sure Dr. Tiller has some vacancies. If you're not, talk to me, we'll see if I can convince a couple of them to come my way. But we do get excited when we see applicants from either Darlington County or at least the PD area, because we realize that we're talking with potential, or pre-serv, or potential teachers who do have a vested interest in the community and are interested in saving a cousin or saving a brother or a relative or making the home they grew up in a little bit better. And I think, I think that's true. And Dr. Jones is right, turnover is probably a bigger issue. But what I said earlier still stands true. There are people that aren't as vested in an area or a community, it's almost, it's easier to predict how long they might stay in the current climate. And I think that's something that we have to pay attention to, too. So I think the things that don't cost money, the things that Dr. Tiller and I can do in our districts respectively, is try to help create climates where teachers can grow and learn and become learners. And we really try to work with our HR department to say, let's recruit learners. I don't expect someone to be an expert teacher coming out of college, even coming out of the Mister program. It takes wisdom, experience, learning from mistakes, but it has to be a culture where mistakes are okay and that we learn from them and we grow from them and we get better. And sometimes I think inadvertently, our high-stakes accountability models don't support that sometimes, because there's that constant pressure to get a score. So, but anyway, I'm just, I guess echoing and two thumbs up on what Dr. Jones said. But we do get really excited when we see applicants that are from our area, because we know we have a better chance of cultivating them and keeping them in our classrooms for long periods of time.
Well, we have Kelly Payne, a teacher in the Columbia area with us, and she's with Jolie right now. Jolie, you want to talk to Kelly Payne for us? It's great to have a teacher with us tonight.
Thank you. And Kelly, you know, you're living it every day. You're here in the schools, you're teaching. Let's talk a little bit about, you know, what are the issues that you're facing when it comes to education equality in your schools?
My thoughts are that you don't necessarily have to teach in a blighted urban area or a depressed rural region to face some of these same issues, meaning we still have a lot of children that are impoverished and a lot of students that are coming into high school that are not at the reading levels that they ought to be. We're seeing a lot of very low Lexile scores.
And you, as a teacher, let's talk a little bit about what challenges you're facing to be able to teach your curriculum to these students that are coming in.
I feel like in my district, we have a pretty good support system as far as providing teachers with professional development. But yet, that's not enough, because we still have students that are coming in unprepared. And I think that's what we need to fix. And I believe that one way to do that would be by focusing on early childhood education and making sure that they're able to read on grade level and that by the time they're in third grade, that they're reading on grade level. And then by the time they get to high school, they may not have these issues.
Well, thank you so much, Kelly.
So it's great to hear from you, Kelly. It's good to have a teacher's perspective on that. But so really, we're talking about many parts of our state still being segregated and what separate but equal means. What, speaking of segregation, are we separate but equal when it comes to education?
That's a tough question, but, and I'll answer it honestly. I think, yes, in some areas, communities are still pretty segregated. You don't have to, you can just drive around and see that. I think it's our responsibility, though. People choose the community that they live in. Our responsibility and my responsibility as State Superintendent of Education is that no matter what the demographics are, that every student has the condition set that they can be successful for what their passion is. We've been doing it for a lot of students in South Carolina. But when we add the word "every" to our vision, it is a bigger responsibility. And we have not been doing it for every. And that's what we're working on, with or without the court ruling. And it's going to take a lot of things. As Roy said, there's not just one thing that's going to fix this. As he was speaking, I was thinking, what a great record. That's just, that is just beyond belief that you have 100% of your Misters still in education. That is fantastic. So that's a terrific model. One thing I think that we're realizing now, that our at-risk children, and as Kelly said, they're at-risk children all over the state, whether they're in rural districts or not, but generally, they are, they're more, there's a higher density of students in these rural plaintiff districts who are at risk. And we've been fooling ourselves, I think, to believe that we can bring them up to their right level in just those 180 days that we have. So I have been working in many districts, Helena has Helena has done a wonderful job in Marlborough while she had a fantastic grant, and she may speak to that, where she did a summer learning opportunity for all of her students. Unfortunately, the grant went away and she didn't have the money to do that. That's immoral. We've got to fix that. We've got to make sure that we are able to do what we need to do in the summer, after-school summer programs, to keep these children.
Engaged and learning.
Engaged. Because the research shows now, we may be able to bring a child up, an at-risk child up, are very close to where they need to be by the end of May or June when we do our testing. Then there's three months. The children who are not at risk, they move forward, they go to summer camps, learn, do fun things. And our children who are at risk, who don't have those opportunities, fall back. So the gap gets wider. And then we try again the next year. And after six, seven, eight years, it's just impossible. So we've got to focus on more support, more support, and it has to be really engaging learning, fun, engaging learning, not just what happens during the regular school year. But it broke my heart when Helena told me that she, through a grant, was able to give this summer opportunity almost to her entire student population, or at least all of her at-risk students, K through 12. And then the federal grant or the grant funding went away. And so she wasn't able to do that, but just for a few students this year. And I'm hearing that story all over the state. So that is a focus that I'm trying to work on. And I hope, and it will be a recommendation, at least from the Department of Education, I think from the staff at the General Assembly and the plaintiff districts, that we offer some type of on-task, extra time on task learning for at-risk students in these rural areas.
And we were very fortunate to partner with the National Children's Defense Fund. And we applied for several grants before we landed that one, but it was for $7.3 million. And we shared in that grant with East Baton Rouge, Louisiana School District. And the grant provided after-school opportunities as well as summer opportunities for our students, not only at-risk students, but those students that were right on the bubble. They were doing well, maybe B work, but we knew that they were capable of producing A work. So we included all of these students. We saw very great results from it, but the problem was, once the grant ended, we couldn't sustain it. But it was outstanding for our students.
So, you know, we're talking about, a lot of our discussion is centering around inequities that revolve around money, okay? Just example of it. But is there more really to it than that? I mean, is it more than just money? We've talked a little bit about the community involvement and is it parental involvement?
Well, I think the Senator said it earlier, money's a part of it, but it's not the only thing. And I like to say, it's not always the programs, it's the people. You can have a great program, but if you don't have really energetic, high-quality folks to run those programs, and that's an issue, to get people to go live in a rural area. I live out in a rural area, but some folks are much more rural than me. You know, when you're 50 miles away from a Walmart or a movie theater, it's very hard to get young people to go live there. And I think to Roy's point, again, I think we have tried in the past, and we've tried many things, and honestly, not much has worked. In our old Accountability Act, where we sent in teacher specialists, we sent in principal specialists, but they were folks who were coming in and they were going to be there for two or three years and they left. We've got to come up with some solutions. Call Me Mister is wonderful. We're looking at an idea and Governor Haley has pushed this and supporting this. And I think it will work also, and that is to help train folks who are in the rural areas, who may not have had the opportunity to go to college. Maybe they're serving as a teacher's aide, and we know they'd make a fantastic teacher. And we need to help them give some type of adult, for adult workers, a college fast-track program that the state would probably pay for and help them with scholarships.
So going back to that point where it's the people in the community, instead of trying to, you know, so many of these rural communities can't get professionals to come live there, and those include the teachers, you can't get them to come live there, but looking at that community seems like.
I visited in Turberville and Timminsville today, saw some wonderful teacher aides who were residents of the community, been an aide, but just never had a chance to go to college. So the principals told me, oh, we have several of those we could suggest. So I think that will be a recommendation and will help us as far as this people issue, who will stay there in the community, to really be dynamic leaders and teachers.
Okay. Educating the whole child is important, and we're seeing many programs, just some of the ones we've talked about here, that are working throughout the state to make education more equal. One of those programs is right here at Francis Marion University. It's the Center for Excellence to Prepare Teachers of Children of Poverty. Take a look.
The Center of Excellence to Prepare Teachers of Children of Poverty is a project at Francis Marion University. Our focus is in drilling into the research, what teachers and school leaders typically don't have time to do. We drill into the research to identify what can be most successful in our schools that serve high-poverty kids. What are the highest impact strategies? And then we try to take those strategies out into the schools, to share them with teachers and with school leaders.
I think it's realized our wildest expectations. I think we've struck a resounding note with teachers and administrators and parents and children, not just within our region and across the state, but interestingly enough, on a national level. I think that we've touched a nerve out there by examining topics that haven't previously been addressed by educators and by administrators. And I think they've been very, very responsive to our overtures.
We have developed standards for teachers of children of poverty. And then we worked with the State Department of Education to achieve for South Carolina the only certification for teachers of children of poverty in the nation. So that was a landmark event, not just for South Carolina, but for the nation.
It's important that we, as educators, be educated about dealing with children of poverty, teaching children of poverty, helping their families. The Center of Excellence does a wonderful job of that.
Annually, we have workshops, we have a two-day summer institute. And in addition to that, we do outreach into schools. And then finally, we do our coursework. And our coursework is offered across the state. So we're excited that now we are touching every county, every school district, that we have touched more than 16,000 students indirectly by the activities that their teachers and their school leaders have engaged in.
In Florence School District III, our poverty index is 93%, so it's extremely high. So the Center of Excellence has been an excellent resource with helping us on learning how to teach students of poverty. And we've been, in turn, been able to retain our teachers, our first-year teachers. So giving them that training, they're better able to meet the needs of our students.
My relationship with the students has changed dramatically. I came away from that class changed. It changed me as a person, not only in the classroom, but outside of the classroom as well.
There's a saying that you can't teach me if you don't know me. We really believe that, and the Center of Excellence has really been a critical resource in helping us to achieve that goal.
A small thing like the Center of Excellence is just the beginning to tackle the problem and expose the problem and expose the difference that you can make when you directly address the problem.
This program is majorly important because it's been proven over and over that children of poverty are the hardest to close the achievement gap with. And if we can reach them, close that achievement gap, we will have done our work.
This is a model for achieving the kind of cooperation that will change educational strategies in the next few decades.
We are only as good as the least of us. If we can expand the services that we provide to our children who are under-resourced, if we can expand services to their parents, then we can do a better job of tapping into their hidden potential, which then, in turn, will help South Carolina to grow and be as successful as our state can be.
Jolie Ortiz is talking to two of our special guests who are in the audience. They're right here from Francis Marion University. Jolie?
Thank you. I have Dr. Tammy Poloski, which is the person you just saw on our video, and Dr. Meredith Low, who is from the Center of Excellence for, let me get this right, college and then career readiness.
Correct.
Okay. So let's start with Dr. Poloski. Let's talk a little bit about how this program is actually helping. Is it succeeding out there?
Absolutely. We've got great data, anecdotal data, as well as quantitative data on changes that are happening in schools, as teachers are putting into place the strategies that we're facilitating through professional learning opportunities. One of the things that we're seeing though, are teachers are reporting the shifts in their own beliefs, their own beliefs about how they can be successful. Sometimes we talk about mindsets of students, but we've got to also think about the mindsets of teachers. And when teachers begin to believe that they can be successful, the results are going to prove that they actually can be. So it's going to change everything for the students. We're going to be able to peel back those layers that poverty kind of encapsulates kids in, peel back those layers to show that potential.
And our teacher from Columbia said that she took your course and it did open her eyes and she learned a lot from it. She's definitely seeing her students in a different way. So let's go to Dr. Meredith Low. Let's talk a little bit about your program and what it offers.
Okay. So our center is a new center, and we are charged with creating a college and career-ready culture in South Carolina. So we're interested in informing teachers, developing best practices with teachers to really encourage post-secondary success of our students, to inform students of all the different possibilities and make them aware of all of the great things that are out there for them in South Carolina, and help them to see those pathways and the best way for them to get there. So we, you know, we work with teachers with professional development. We also have been working to have statewide meetings where high school and middle and college teachers can get together and talk, which is something they don't often get the chance to do. And they can talk about what's going on in their classrooms. And what that does is help to align curriculum, and it also helps all of us be better about helping our students transition from high school to college, whether that be a four-year program, a two-year program, or a certificate program. We also have a couple of initiatives where we work directly with students. One of those is our Activate Academy, which we held for the first time this past summer. It was fantastic, and we had rising ninth graders come here on campus, stay on campus, get a taste of college life, and really just have some time to reflect on their goals and what they're going to need to do to be successful high school students and then beyond that as well.
Well, thank you so much, Dr. Low and Dr. Poloski.
Thanks, Jolie. Lots going on here at Francis Marion in terms of the Center for Excellence. I think, Dr. Jones, you know, you talked to us a lot about how the Call Me Mister program is pulling more diverse teachers into low-income schools, but tell us again what the Mister stands for? I don't think you said that.
I didn't. Thank you. Mister stands for mentors instructing students toward effective role models.
So that's exactly what that program is doing. There are really lots of programs throughout the state that are doing the same kind of thing with training teachers. Are there some that you would like to talk about, Molly?
Well, first, hats off to Francis Marion and the great work that they're doing and right here in the middle of the PD. So we're going to depend on them. And while the teachers were talking, or the professors were talking, I was thinking, you know, again, the stars are aligning in South Carolina for great success, and it's taking everybody working together. So hats off to them, and they're encouraging other colleges, I think, to do what needs to be done. Landor College and Landor University is focusing on Montessori education, a very personalized, it's an old program, but we've never really had many classrooms or schools in South Carolina. So they have been the catalyst, and we have, we see a tremendous Montessori childhood development program that's growing here in Florence. The Lata School Districts have adopted Montessori, the Swansea School Districts, some of our plaintiff districts all over the state. So children are engaged, and it really is just a better strategy for learning and it builds lifelong learners. So there are lots of great things happening. I think it focuses again on, it's not always the programs, but it's the people. And the bottom line is, for every child, if you want to have students successful, you've got to have great teachers, they've got to have great principals to support them. We've got great superintendents, you've got to hire those great principals. But our colleges, we have to work very closely with them, that our teachers that are out there in these areas, whether they're in a rural district or urban district, they've got to be well-trained. And they've got to know how to meet their students where they are. And this whole concept that Dr. Poloski has taught us about, that the mind of the child in poverty is a little bit different, it might need a different strategy. So we're expecting great things, and it's changing. It's going to take a little while, but a lot of really wonderful things are going on.
That's a great jumping-off point to talk about a child getting started and getting a good education from the start. Jolie has with her Dan Worey, who's in the audience, and he's from First Steps. Jolie?
Yes, that's right. I have Dan here from First Steps. Let's talk about how early is early to get a child into education?
Early is early. We start working with families and mothers even prenatally in programs like Parents' Teachers and Nurse-Family Partnership, which is an evidence-based home visitation program that matches up registered nurses with first-time low-income mothers, beginning even in the second trimester of pregnancy. And so at First Steps, we are charged with working with the 336,000 children in the state under the age of five, from really the time of inception until the time they go to kindergarten, to make sure that they show up at school ready to succeed.
How important is to have programs like this across the state and, you know, even across the nation? It's helping, like you say, it's helping education early on and getting them involved in the program, as both parents and child. How important is it?
I don't think we can overstate how important it is. I think, you know, for kids to succeed in K-12 education, they need to be able to show up at kindergarten ready to succeed. And what we know from research is that there are young children, particularly young children in deep levels of poverty, who during the early years of their lives are exposed, for example, to up to 30 million fewer words than maybe their more privileged peers. So these are kids who are not developing vocabulary in the same way, which is a key skill in terms of coming to school, being prepared to read. So having programs that work, in particular, to support parents and families and other caregivers, childcare and preschool providers around the state, to help these kids be ready when they walk in the door are awfully important.
Thank you so much, Dan.
You know, we're looking at a lot of different aspects here. One we've touched on a little bit was keeping these teachers, like you mentioned with Call Me Mister, how you were able to keep the ones that had been trained working. That is a big issue for you, teacher retention. So let's talk a little bit about how that issue, you know, really deals with children in poverty.
Well, and it's very concerning also, because we do lose so many teachers in those first five years. My general answer to that, in my experience as a teacher myself, in those 18 years that I was a music teacher and I taught all over the United States, when I got to a school, I wanted to stay at that school if the climate was good and if I had a great boss, a great principal. And I had some really good ones and I had some not-so-good ones. And it makes all the difference. I think we normally think about teacher retention, we think about salary, and of course, teacher salary. Teachers need to make more and we need to be focusing on that as much as we can. But it is just as much about the support that they get in the school, and that is leadership. And so while we're developing great teachers, to me, it's just as important that you've got to have great principals. And so we're working with our colleges and universities, even the professional associations. The South Carolina Association of School Administrators is working now with a development program for principals to make sure they know how to deal with children in poverty, make sure they have those skills. So that is an issue both in poverty areas in our plaintiff districts, but in urban areas. But teacher retention, to me, and I don't know, my superintendents may not agree totally, that it's so much about the principal leadership, but I think that's probably the key for teacher retention, is the support of their principals in the school.
This superintendent agrees with Molly 100%. There's no such thing as a good school with a bad principal. Doesn't exist. Just doesn't exist. I'm blessed to have good principals in Darlington County, as Helena is in Marlborough County. And their jobs are enormous. And our jobs are really to remove as many obstacles as we can as superintendents that would keep a principal from being successful. And sometimes it is resources, but sometimes there are other things. there are other things like the emotional support, informational support, appraisal support that's so desperately needed. And one thing that we pay attention to are the psychosocial support for kids. We've increased the number of our social workers. We had two, now we have six. That's not enough, but it's a start in the right direction. We just did a training with trauma care, recognizing trauma with our counselors and our SROs, because some of our young kids are not only in poverty, but they're being traumatized. And we need to recognize those things as educators and even look at school-based mental health so that we can keep kids in school. And we have to, and we have to keep that support throughout. Another challenge that we have that can be related to poverty is happening right under our nose, is that we are a global world, we are a global economy. We have students in Darlington County right now that go home to 14 different languages in their homes. 14 different languages are spoken in homes. And we have to have a more robust awareness of other languages. And we don't have that right now, but that is, that is an issue. And I would, if I don't take this opportunity, I'll kick myself later. But, and we can't fix this right now. But I challenge the United States, how long is it going to be before we get away from the agricultural calendar and we start seriously considering year-round school, but not just repatterning, repattering, patterning 180 days, but adding days to the calendar, meaningful days, whether it's in the regular school year or other programs, because, to address summer learning loss. Japan goes to school 240 days a year. We go 180, do the arithmetic. It doesn't take a scientist to figure out that that's an issue, but it's a national issue.
Senator Malloy is on, sits on the Senate Education Committee. Jump in here.
Well, first of all, as a policymaker, what we do is we allocate resources, and we try to put the plan together. We have a great panel with you today with educators. I agree with Dr. Ingram. He and I have had discussions about year-round school. I think that we've got to get back to the priority school issue that we, that we did not end up, that we sort of got away from. I think you've touched on it as to how children learn. Sometimes, we do have, the poor people will go largely in a poor district per student as much as in a affluent district. They just learn a little bit different. I think that we've got to go to maybe fixing some of the problems that we have. The transportation issue has to be addressed with the two-to-three-hour, well, I guess, the 90-minute bus rides that we end up having. That's some low-hanging fruit that we have to do. I know that from a political standpoint, it's a dicey subject. We've got too many school districts. We've got to end up combining some. School districts have to work together to end up sharing that information, sharing resources. And there's a whole lot of issues that we can get, and I think that are just low-hanging fruit that we can, that we can end up addressing. And so, what we know is, is that we've got to make certain that the exercise of control and dominion of these school districts, that it can work with one another. When we have superintendents and school boards, they've got to end up working with adjacent boards in other jurisdictions to be able to share ideas, to share resources, because we have a finite pool of money that we have here in our state. I'm a proponent of technical schools. I think that we've got to end up continuing to every child that is on a pathway. You know, we teach to college, but I think we've got to expand the technical school for folks, because, as you know, we're in this manufacturing area. We're ready for it. And I think that we have some students that can end up prospering with it. There's a lot of issues that I think that we could end up talking about as far as ideas. And I look forward to hearing it from those that are trained for it, to see if we, as policymakers, can end up helping, helping to-
And that leads us to what is the future of education in South Carolina?
Well, I guess that's my job, huh?
You should get a first stab at it.
Right.
We have about a minute and a half.
Okay, first stab. Senator Malloy said it beautifully. We've got to prioritize. We can't, there are a lot of ideas. We've got to choose which ones will have the greatest impact, which ones are doable and fundable. Prioritize those and put them into place. And I think it begins with the teaching force, the principalship, giving the extra time-on-task to the students. So, look for a priority list, and we're going to be working very closely. But I think the future is very bright. We've got work to be done for all our students. All of our students need to achieve better. And we need to have higher expectations. And we need to change our mindset in South Carolina, that we can be number one in the nation. We can do it. So, you'll be getting a priority list.
And the court order is very clear and specific, that the school districts have a very important role in changing the way that we end up doing education here in our state.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you all for being with us. Thank you to our audience and to Francis Marion University. For more information from tonight, visit us at scetv.org. From all of us at ETV, good night.